It is 7:02 PM. Today is June 1st, 2021. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Arundel Planning Board via Zoom remote meeting. We'll start off with a call to order. We have Susan Sinnet, Susan Roth, Paul Green, I'm Rich Genon, the chairman and the town planner. Lee J. Feldman is here with us. Whether or not anybody makes it in or not, I'm not sure. We need to start with the approval of the agenda. We have-
Forgot Paul. Did you say Paul Green?
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
I said it right after you.
Oh, you got frozen there.
Please for a second. It's all right. I'm not leaving. I think that's the VPN I'm using seems to be unstable and I don't know why. So we have the approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for May 18th, 2021, which we are going to have to table. There are not enough of us here to be able to approve that. Public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to to address the planning board about some item that is not on the agenda? Then we have a public hearing for the Arundel Conservation Trust Conditional Use and Shoreland Zoning Application Phase Two. After the public hearing, we will entertain the application for the Arundel Conservation Trust Conditional Use and Shoreland Zoning Application Phase Two. We will then go into ordinance revisions. We have three different items. And you'll excuse me, but I'm going to change the order of them slightly. The first one is a discussion with action proposed revisions to section 1.7 of the Residential Growth Ordinance. The the next item, item two, is going to be this proposed removal of campgrounds as permitted use. It should say changed. A proposal to change campgrounds from permitted uses to conditional uses in the R3, R4. I sent that out to everybody and why I didn't print it off for myself, I have no idea. And the last one will be a discussion with action proposed amendments to the Land Use Ordinance 9312 Cluster Housing Plan Unit Developments. That's a six-page document that you should have. We've been working on that for months. So at any rate, I need someone to make a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Those in favor. Susan Sinnet?
S.
Susan Roth?
Yes.
Paul Green?
Right.
It is unanimous. Is there? I would ask if there's anybody here from the public that has any comments or anything they would like us to discuss or put on the agenda for review at some point in the future?
I'm here now, so no. You're welcome.
Moving right along to the public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 7:05 PM. Item number one is the Arundel Conservation Trust Conditional Use and Shoreland Zoning Application Phase Two. A proposal to construct a low-impact bicycle trail linking the existing flow trail with the eastern trail on a 37-acre parcel tax map 28 lot 5B located at 257 Limerick Road in the R1 Shoreland Overlay Stream Protection and Resource Protection Districts. The Kennebunkport Conservation Trust is the owner, the Arundel Conservation Trust is the applicant, and Joan Hall is the applicant's agent. Take it away, Joan. Speak to the public.
Well, we're very excited about the second phase. And this will, the walking trail that we have is really a little rough for bicyclists. And we really, our vision had always been that we would be able to have a safe way for everybody to get onto the eastern trail with bicycles. So this will be, this will do that, although it is a multi-use trail. So we expect that walkers will be able to use it in the winter, cross-country, and snowshoeing.
There will be no motorized vehicles on that, I'm assuming?
No, no. No. It's not, it's not allowed even in the deed other than to do maintenance.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you're not going to have snowmobilers running up and down.
No, not after all the work we're going to do to build that trail, right, Tanya?
She's going to be out there with an ice, ice gun shooting off icicles at people when they come by. Okay.
We do, we do respect that we do have a community of of snowmobiles in Arundel. And we hope as we have more land and more opportunities that we will, we will find a way to include them in our work.
That would be cool.
Also, but yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes. Um, your bike trail that you're creating, is it going to be packed rocks, going to be dirt? As I'm just curious for myself. I'm sorry, I'm looking at all the paperwork. I just got my book, so how is it going to be?
I saw the size of that book. I'm impressed. It's basically packed earth. There are some, some sections where there's some, two bridges that need to go over some streams. They're all removable bridges like we have on the walking trail. And there will be some that are some boardwalks that we build up. You can see, I drew some pictures. There's some pictures there, so it's up, so it does not stop the flow of the water. But we certainly wouldn't want bicycle tires riding, riding through that. But we hope to have the, the natural earth. We expect there may be some areas that are a little damp where we may have to pack down some gravel. Hence the need for some of those materials, gravel or groundstone.
Okay, thank you.
But the idea is that it will be smooth. It won't have rocks and rocks and roots. It should be a fairly smooth trail.
More of a multi-use bike versus a mountain bike situation. In other words, hybrid.
There will be some gentle curves around, maybe some, some banked curves, but that's, that's it. It's not like the pump track with all of the special features. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Joan, I have a question. Is the, is the path going to be wider? Or is, is to accommodate both bikers and walkers? Or is it going to remain the same?
It's probably, as we're planning it, and it depends upon the terrain, sort of four to six feet. So there will be, there will be some, there will be some room, some, some wide, and some of it's in more of open space so that folks can, folks can walk. But truth be told, it's going to mainly probably be for, for cyclists. But in the winter, it'll be where we won't have cyclists. It'll be, it'll be for
Cross-country.
Yeah, cross-country and, and snowshoeing.
Yeah.
We really want to get the bike, bikes sort of off the walking trail because it's really kind of chewing it up a bit.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Hall? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing at 7:10. We will move on to the application itself. And please bear with me. I don't want to read that through again. But I will. Arundel Conservation Trust Conditional Use and Shoreland Zoning Application Phase Two. A proposal to construct a low-impact bicycle trail linking the existing flow trail with the eastern trail on a 37-acre parcel tax map 28 lot 5B located at 257 Limerick Road in the R1 Shoreland Overlay Stream Protection and Resource Protection Districts. The Kennebunkport Conservation Trust is the owner, the Arundel Conservation Trust is the applicant, and Joan Hall is the applicant's agent. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we accept the application as proposed and submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. I will now read the findings of fact. Findings of fact and motion for approval. Arundel Conservation Trust Trail System Shoreland Zoning Permit. Whereas on June 1st, 2021, the Arundel Planning Board received the Shoreland Zoning Condition Use Application from the Arundel Conservation Trust Act to construct low-impact walking trails linking the future town hall site with the eastern trail on a 37-acre parcel tax map 28 lot 5A located on Limerick Road in the R1 Shoreland Overlay Stream Protection and Resource Protection Districts. Whereas the planning board chose not to conduct a public site walk of the proposed project site and after careful review determine the application to be complete since previous site walks have been conducted along this trail system. Whereas on June 1st, 2021, the planning board conducted a public hearing in conformance with land use ordinance section 10.6.3.3. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. I need to make a correction. The, the original hearing was on May 18th, not on June 1st. Findings of fact. Number one, the owner of the property is Kennebunkport Conservation Trust and the Arundel Conservation Trust is the applicant. Number two, the 37-acre property is located on Limerick Road, tax map 28 lot 5A in the R1 Shoreland Overlay Stream Protection and Resource Protection Districts. Number three, the property currently contains a complex of streams and forested wetlands interspersed with mixed hardwood and softwood uplands. Number four, the applicant proposes to continue the clearing and blazing of a network of low-impact hiking trails commencing at the upland side of the, of the Arundel Town Hall and thence along the perimeter of the dominant resource protection forested wetland to connect to a trail easement along Duck Brook. Granted over a 22.8-acre parcel tax map 28 lot 10A and then connecting to the eastern trail on tax map 28 lot 15. Excuse me. Number five, several small stream crossings are proposed to be traversed by temporary boardwalk-type bridges erected on removable precast concrete piers as illustrated in detailed drawings included in the record map submission. Where unstable ground conditions are encountered, the applicant proposes to deploy board planks laid directly on the soil. Number six, the proposed trail is proposed to traverse primarily upland soils located around the perimeter of the central forested wetland. Number seven, parking is being temporarily provided off Limerick Road on the town portion of the parcel. There is an excess of 500 linear feet of site distance provided to ingressing and egressing vehicles from the parking area. This temporary pad will be replaced by a formal paved parking lot constructed in conjunction with the construction of the town hall. Has this been done, Joan?
Yeah, it's the town hall parking lot.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So I'll just take number seven out. Number eight, submissions documenting the proposed trail system include property survey and wetlands delineation map prepared by Sebaggo Technics for the town of Arundel and dated November 27, 2018 trail location map prepared by the Arundel Conservation Trust dated July 12, 2018. Detailed sheets for water course crossings prepared by Arundel Conservation Trust and survey easement granted to Kennebunk Conservation Trust by Philip Labby. Informants with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the approved criteria of section 867 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections 5, 8, and 9 of this ordinance. To which the proposed trail uses are permitted as conditional shoreline zone uses in the RP and SP districts and permitted uses in the SOP district. Temporary nature of the structures meet, meets the standards of land use ordinance sections 5 and 8. This is the fun one. We have to vote on each one of these. On each one of the conditional uses, and there are 12 of them. So I need a motion for 8671.
I'll make a motion that we accept the condition of paragraph 8671.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor. Paul?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 8672, the proposed project conforms to the goals and objectives of the Arundel Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan encourages open space preservation and environmental education as well as promoting outdoor exercise and enjoyment of the Arundel's natural heritage.
I'll move to accept that.
I'll second that.
Susan S. made the motion. Susan R. seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 8673, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. No federal or state permits are required as long as structures remain temporary and outside of the resource.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, second Susan Sinnet. Any discussion? All those in favor. Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 8674, the proposed project will not adversely impact upon the existing water regime, hydrology, salinity, water chemistry, flow volume, or flow velocity of wetlands, ponds, streams, and watercourses. All structures will be located outside of the resources. Paths shall be cleared on natural topography, and where erosion potential exists, wood chips shall be applied.
I'll make a motion. We accept paragraph 8674.
So I'll second that.
Motion was made by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth? Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
We'll just go alphabetical. It'll be fine. When you say Susan, I'll know you'll say Roth first, and then I'll say Sinnet because we'll go alphabetical as the teacher-
Good idea. Good idea. Otherwise, he's going to lose his mind.
I know. I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna do what we do on-
Let's just use as the plan. That's gonna be-
I was gonna do what I do on the other board. We have Rich one and Rich three. We skipped right over Rich two.
I'm not a number, sir. I'll just go second. It's fine.
Okay.
I think Keith is gaslighting you, actually. This is his way of driving you cuckoo for popo pups.
I'll get revenge. 8675, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of groundwater resource, resources. The project will have no impact upon existing groundwater resources.
I move to accept 8675.
I'll second that.
Motion by Susan Sinnet, seconded by Susan Roth. Discussion? All those in favor. Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 8676, the proposed project will not result in sedimentation, erosion, and/or nutrient loading of adjacent and downstream wetlands, water bodies, streams, and watercourses. The low-impact nature of the trail building will not present a sedimentation or erosion threat to surrounding resources.
I'll make a motion that we accept 867-
Six.
Six, yeah. I'm losing track here.
I'll second that.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 8677, the proposed project will- Is that the one I just read? No. 8677, the proposed project will not have a deleterious impact upon existing invaluable aquatic and wildlife habitats and populations. The trail system will not have any impact on existing aquatic or terrestrial habitats.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Susan Sinnet. Any discussion? All those in favor. Paul Green?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 8678, the proposed project will not adversely impact critical wildlife habitats and marine resources. The trail system will not have any impact on existing aquatic will not have any impact upon critical wildlife habitats and marine resources.
So moved?
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green. Any discussion? All those in favor. Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 8679, the proposed project will not adversely impact important local cultural resources, archaeological and historic resources, or the visual quality of shorelines and surrounding environments as viewed from the resources, public spaces. The trail system will enhance appreciation and access to local cultural and visual quality resources.
So moved?
I'll second that.
Who said that? Susan Sinnet made the motion. Susan Roth seconded it. Is there discussion? All those in favor. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 86710, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life in the resource area. The trail system will not generate offensive odors, dust, debris, or other nuisances, nor will it denigrate the quality of life in the neighborhood.
Move we accept 86710?
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 86711, the proposed project will not adversely impact the integrity of important vegetative stands as well as unique natural areas as identified by the Maine Department of Conservation. There are no unique natural areas on the property identified by the MDOC.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green. Any discussion? Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 86712, the proposed project meets the approval standards of land use ordinance section 1064. The trail system as proposed meets the approves, approval standards of section 1064 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Susan Sinnet, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby grants a zoning, a shoreline zoning conditional use permit to the Arundel Conservation Trust Act to construct low-impact walking trails linking the future, linking the town hall site with the eastern trail on a 37-acre parcel tax map 28 lot 5A located in, on the Limerick Road in the R1 Shoreland Overlay Stream Protection and Resource Protection Districts subject to the following conditions. There shall be no deviation from the approved plans and details without prior planning board approval. So approved this by the Arundel Planning Board this first day of June 2021. The motion was made and seconded. All those in favor. Paul Green?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Congratulations. It is unanimous. You have your permit.
Thank you.
I should explain to the two, for the, for the sake of the two new board members. We read on a conditional use, we read and vote on every single one. Instead of taking them as a whole, there, there have been permits that have failed one item. If you fail one item, you don't get your permit. So we make, we have all of the board vote on every one of the items. Okay?
Yep.
It makes it a little bit long. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. A couple of questions. First, I'd like to introduce Aaron Welsh, who's been attending this meeting. Aaron has very graciously volunteered to help us with this plan, essentially eliminating the need for us to, to hire the main trail builders. It's very generous, and, and I'd, I'd like to recognize him for that. He also helped make sure with his experience that this plan made sense for what we were trying to do. The second question I have is, is we, we put a grant in yesterday. And
A grant application.
A grant application, yes, that we hope we will get. But part of it is that they, they won't really, they may not really look at it because we didn't have a permit yesterday. I guess I'm wondering how soon would we be able to get something in writing or something that we could give to this group because it really, it would be the last big hunk of funding we need to make this happen.
Well, I can, I can get the findings of fact sent out around to the, to the various board, and we can sign all of those. They'll come out on DocuSign.
So I've corrected the changes that we had along the way tonight, like the getting rid of future and changing the date. And I'm about to send those to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want it done that way.
Yes, please.
You will have them in a few minutes.
Okay, and then I will, I will get that sent out around after the meeting. And the rest of the board can, can sign their share, and we'll have it back out. Are you going to be around at all tomorrow, Lee J?
Uh, let me check my calendar. I do have some meetings at my office tomorrow, but I have an 11 o'clock in my office, and then I have to prepare for a Waterboro Planning Board meeting tomorrow night. So if you need me first thing in the morning, I can zip down. Um, and
How we can get Joan the, the permit?
Um, yeah.
But will, will the findings of fact be sufficient? Because it does say that we've voted to give you the approval.
That's what we gave them for the, for the first part of the, we, we added the permit we got last July.
Oh, okay. Then once this comes, once this comes back to me, I'll, I'll send a copy up to Lee J. for the records, and then I'll send a copy over to you as well.
Oh, that would be great. That would be fantastic. Thank you for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, it doesn't matter that you said walking trail, right? And it's a bike trail. That's okay. All right.
Yeah, it shouldn't make any difference.
I wasn't going to open my mouth, and I thought, oh. All right. Well, thank you all very much, and welcome, Paul and, and Susan S.
Thanks.
Yeah, to the planning board and, and you, Lee. We appreciate your support in this. We're very excited about it.
A great addition.
As a bicyclist, I'm very excited about it.
Have you, have you tried the first one?
No, because I'm a road biker. So I do, I, I use the eastern trail, and I use the road, and I, you know, it's not really meant for that, but I do it anyway, so I'm very excited. This is going to be an option for me.
Yes, this will, this will really make it lovely for, for cyclists to, to connect because the walking trail is really not appropriate. We're excited.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day.
We will. Just make a special day. Thank you. Okay, and you know, Tanya, I just wanted to also Catherine Rush is our co-chair of the, of our trailblazers. The volunteers that actually build the trail. You know, Tanya, as a chair, co-chair also. Just wanted you to meet some of the other folks behind it.
Tanya, how did you ever get roped into this?
Um, actually, it's Dot Gregwire's fault. I, you know, I'm a long time, I love to hike and have always supported conservation. And when I heard Dot told me one day that they were going to create an Arundel Conservation Trust, and I, I had never met her before, and I grabbed her phone, and I, I met her at like some party at someone's house that I knew, and so just put my information in her phone, and she called when they started the group, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we're very, very lucky to have her.
Onto the next item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Take care, guys.
Bet. Take care.
Ordinance revisions. We have three- We have three ordinance revisions. The first one is proposed revisions to Section one seven of the Residential Growth Ordinance to establish auxiliary methods for issuing growth permits for multifamily and age-restricted developments. This is well, you, both Paul and Susan, you've been in on these meetings for the past
Yep.
long time about whether or not these should be part of the forty growth permits in the residential ordinance, or should they be separated out and treated separately? If, if we adopt this particular definition, it will create a separate method of calculating the multifamily and the age-restricted developments. It will take it out, it will not take anything out of the forty that, that the growth ordinance calls for residential permits.
Okay.
Personally, I, I'm in favor of this personally.
I am as well, and we've been discussing this ad nauseam for months.
And I just, I, we can go any way that anybody wants. I just wanna move past this point.
So I would like to move that we accept the bifurcation of the permits between forty residential application or permits, and then another grouping of senior multifamily and, what is it, age restricted?
Yeah.
So and at least we can move along.
We can, we can start working up all of the various permutations that, that may come about. So is there a second?
So your motion is just to split it, not even to address the option one or option two in this proposal?
At this, at this point, yes. Because at least this allows us to move past the point of constantly going over the same stuff.
Yeah, I mean, then at least we can decide if we, how we wanna divvy up. You know, the age-restricted, the multifamily, and the senior, and whether or not we want to allow, you know, the CEO or the permit department or process to rob Peter to pay Paul. In other words, if we don't have enough applications in the single-family residence, then perhaps we, and we have more applications on the other side, you know, we can allow one to feed the other and sort of use it as one, as a sort of a balancing act. I hope, I didn't say that very articulately, but in other words, they can sort of support each, each side of the agreement or proposal can support the other, depending upon how many applications of each we get. And we rarely reach the forty permit threshold.
We think the, the one thing that we need to, that, that more than anything that we've been looking at is the whole idea getting an age-restricted development in here. We've got one. But if you're a builder, you get one permit. You can get six permits a year. Nobody is gonna put in an age-restricted community and only be allowed to have six permits.
No.
And, and the same thing
We can discuss that too, about how we're gonna divide it up, and how many condos a builder gets to, how many permits he gets to build for, you know, full
We can, we can move forward and look at that, and it just separates it off from the forty residential growth permits. Yes, Susan?
So I just wanted to be clear, because you know, you're, you're going off tangent, and discuss what you want, what you just proposed was, was just for us to move forward and not discuss any of that really, but just to separate it.
That's correct.
That's what you're, you're moving for us to discuss and to vote on.
That's what I, that's what I'd like, and then we, and then we can start working on
We're done, stage one. We're
Right, but we're, I, I think what, in a long-winded, circuitous way, I think we were trying to explain the rationale, and how it
Starting to get into the discussion about them again, like
Oh, I love you for keeping us on track.
Do that.
So the answer is, yes.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second.
All right, I'll second your motion.
Motion made by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to put out as a discussion, that that's discussion that you were just having, was a discussion that we can have now, moving forward, after we pass this.
Yes, we can.
Don't move.
We don't order.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I, I'll be honest with you, the whole thing I've been wrestling with in my head with this whole thing is, is why the magic number of forty? How do we know that, you know, we keep saying that you're worried about how it's gonna affect the town, how it's gonna affect the school, how it's gonna affect the fire department, but what do we have for data that shows us that forty's the number?
Which we make a discussion to have once we pass this.
You know, and that's why I, I agree wholeheartedly, I think multifamilies, communities like that need to be looked at separately to see what the impact would be. Okay, because if you go build an elderly housing, you know, my mo- my mother-in-law lives at Emory School in Bedford. Well, that's got like eighteen to twenty apartments in there. Okay, and like you said, six out of, six in a year ain't gonna cut it, all right? But also eighteen people there, in their seventies and eighties, the ambulance is probably gonna run more often. So how does that affect, and how do we compensate for that?
Well, we, we, we did start having discussions about impact fees. And, and we will continue to have those discussions and work through here.
Right, I remember that.
And just, as a final
Let's, let's, let's get back to the, to the motion and a vote.
Oh, move this. I was just gonna give one final aside. Okay.
Paul? Yes or no?
Yes.
Susan Roth?
Yes.
Susan Senate?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Yay.
Yeah, we can move, now we can get into the minutia and the nitty-gritty at some other point. The next item was a proposed change of campgrounds from permitted uses to conditional uses in the R-three and the R-four districts. Right now, they are permitted. The problem becomes, we're talking in the R-three specifically, in the R-four to a more limited degree, very densely populated residential areas. Where if you were to try to put in a campground, you would be having these campers in your neighbor's backyard. Imagine if you would, Susan, we put one at the end of Laurel Lane.
Why not everything else is going there? It's fine.
But, but how, that's the kind of thing we're looking at, you know, where would it be acceptable and permissible as to, as opposed, which would require a conditional use permit as opposed to it's permitted, you can put one wherever you want?
Without, without coming before the planning board.
Right, which makes sense.
Yes, so, so moved. I, I move that we make it a conditional use and not a permitted use of installing campgrounds in the R-three and the R-four districts.
Is there a second?
Me, secondly.
Susan Roth made the motion, Susan Senate seconded it.
Oh, can I ask a question with this?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, just so I make sure it's clear in my head. So right now, you're telling me if I had an R-three zone, I could just go get a building permit from the code enforcement officer and go put this in without even coming to the board?
That's correct.
And this now will change that where they have to come forth with a plan and, and a impact study and all, okay? Yep. Sounds good to me.
Okay. All those in favor? Susan?
Can I ask?
Susan has a question, I could
I do, I'm sorry. Is there anything in currently that is in this, in this, in the districts that are campgrounds? Is there anything that is currently?
In the, in the districts where campgrounds are right now?
In other words, in other words, is this, is this, is like, they're grandfathered, obviously, but moving forward, is there anything currently right now that has been a discussion for that? Is there gonna come up in front of the, of anybody to say there'd be one in one of those districts?
Nope.
This is not preventing it, I get that, I'm just curious.
And, and if, if somebody had put it in front of us, and we were discussing it, making this change would not alter that.
Okay.
We, they, they would be considered under the old section of the ordinance. And quite honestly, this may take us up to a year before it ever gets in front of a town meeting, because we'll have public hearings on it. And once we have the public hearings, we'll send it up to the Board of Selectment, and they will have to, to call for a town meeting.
I just wanted to know if there was any kind of heat in the fire about it in the first place, if anything's happening, okay? I was just, I wasn't gonna change my vote, I was just curious for history.
No, understandable. So your vote is?
Yes.
Susan Roth?
Yes.
Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And then the next one, proposed amendments to Land Use Ordinance, Section nine three twelve, Cluster Housing Planned Unit Developments. That is that great six-page document.
Yep.
And most of this, I believe on, on the first three pages of this, or the, the first two pages, we have worked all the way through. And all of the changes that are under, all of the items that are underlined are items that have been added in. And then you have you have a little bit of items that have been crossed out.
So, Rich, would you mind if I gave a brief, well, I guess it's, it's been redundant to say brief synopsis, but if I gave a synopsis
Absolutely.
to Susan and Paul for what they might have missed. And the thing is, we've had several permits come before us that would ordinarily be considered candidates for cluster housing, and would almost be forced to use that as its template. But for various reasons, either the quality of the land, or the amount of open space, or possible other better solutions to the use of the land during development, we decided that we wanted to have some flexibility where developers weren't forced to cluster, and that the planning board could decide on a case-by-case basis when it was best to cluster and when it wasn't, and that other solutions should be sought. And we just had a situation with Arundels Keep where, for various reasons I won't go into, we discussed another solution in terms of the way they, the houses and driveways could access, what's the name of the road? Rich? Where Arundels Keep is, is it Irving?
Irving Road, yes.
Irving Road. So instead of having a, a road go into the development, the developer was able to come back with a design where it had separate driveways off of Irving Road, which meant less area was used for road, there was more good open space for open space, and he got pretty much everything he wanted with a better plan. But he didn't cluster it in the traditional way. And so that was because of input by all of us, including the developer, to come up with a better solution, and that's what we're hoping by making this ordinance a little more flexible. So I hope that makes sense.
So starting on page three, which is as far as I can remember, how we're getting. We had the discussion about bonus lots. And there was a, there were a number of discussions that were held about verbiage. And the first one came up under bonus lots. Says that the planning board may limit the number of additional lots that can be realized from a cluster design that would other, otherwise not be feasible with a conventional layout. And I think the big question that came up was, should it be, we may limit, or we shall limit?
The, between the two, you have may in the next sentence as well, so I'm just saying, you're basically saying, oh, there's lots of, of, of open conversation in that. The planning board may also award, so, you know, it's one of those things, it's like if you're it probably shall, I, I would, I would be more comfortable with shall limit versus may limit from the way that it was worded overall.
May limit leaves it open to discussion. Shall means that they have to do it, if I'm, am I correct?
No, you're correct. I'm just saying in regard to how it's written in general, it just seems like they, they could, they might not, it's making it be because we had talked, the ones that I had been before, there's a lot of them are trying to make it more open in discussion with the planning board, but also to be more specific in some ways, to make it clear of what you're thinking. And this, to me, feels
I'm trying to find that other spot that you were saying that it said may.
The next sentence.
There was another
And also award bonus lots for cluster design.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's just additional, it's additional information. I'm just asking in, in regard to the the thought of having it be may versus shall against the semantics.
It depends on what you wanna do with this, though. If you're looking at keeping it so you wanna work with them and clustering works out to the advantage of the town as well as to the developer, I don't think you wanna go tie your hands and say, you know, shall makes it permanent, you're done. There's the roadblock.
And that's the way the ordinance is right now. Right now, you shall cluster. Right, that's, you don't have a choice in the matter.
You're gonna look at it and decide what the best way is going forward.
Right, and we we had a consensus that that was the direction we wanted to go, was to leave it so that it was open to discussion. Because as development increases in the town of Arundel, and usable land becomes less available, forcing people to cluster is problematic. So we're trying to find creative ways to get, produce a solution that everybody's happy with.
The other, the other thing that we had looked at was that this is actually gonna force the planning board to do its job, which is to help plan what's going on, as opposed to just accept whatever the developer brings to us and says, here's my plan. We could, we essentially do what we did out on Arundels Keep when we suggested to the developer that there might be a better way to go about causing, getting what he wanted out of there, because he was gonna end up with, with eight very small skinny lots. And when we finished talking to him, I believe he had what, seven?
Right.
But they were, they, they were more spacious. He was able to, to accomplish what he wanted without having to put in a lot of infrastructure inside the subdivision, because they have shared driveways. And he was also able to work from in the Resource Protection, there's a fifty-foot-wide no-cut buffer zone between all of the buildings and the road that is being turned over to the Arundel Conservation Trust, so that they will be able to access it and make some walking trails going out around behind all of the property, back out into some wetlands that are out there.
And it made for a much more attractive development, actually. And a lot less pavement. So so that's the rationale.
I was just looking at it as the bonus lot option. I mean, it's a bonus. Do you know what I mean? Like, I'm not opposed to, to having it as may, because I, I was there for that discussion, that you wanted me to make it more specific, that people can come and talk to you and, and make it more variant, yeah.
So I move that we make that change, that shall is removed and may is inserted in its place.
Okay. Let's look at that entire Section B. Is there, because that's a new section that was not in the old.
I'm sorry, I'm reading this off my phone.
X and H, is that what you're talking about?
There is an H, isn't it?
Yeah.
Remind me to go get a new set of eyes.
I'm like, wait, I'm like, well, no, that's what I was doing with my readers, I'm like, wait.
No, that is, that is H.
Okay.
So if we looked at all of Section H, we may award bonus lots for clusters designs which incorporate open clu- open pasture visible from public roads, farmlands of national or open pasture visible from public roads, farmlands of national or statewide significance, scenic rock outcrops, stands of scenic trees or vegetation, waterfront views, or landscapes that embody Arundel's rural character, particularly if they're visible from public roads, byways, and spaces. That fits into the comprehensive plans, rural character, which nobody has ever defined. I have no idea what it is. It's like art. I know it when I see it.
Susan already already moved it, but I think it should be moved as written in the new formation.
Okay. It hasn't been seconded, so if somebody wants to second it, okay. Motion has been made by Susan Sinnet and seconded by Paul Green to accept it as written in section H for bonus lots. Is there any discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, because I'm trying to follow along here.
Okay.
I've got, I've got the file that was left. And the bonus lots on the table section that I have is F. Was there an additional change?
There must have been. Yeah, we're, we're working on version, version 2.0 point, version two, May 18th, 2021.
Okay, the latest version I had at my desk was 1.5, which was April 5th, April 5th.
Yeah, so we've got a later version.
Okay, I will track that down. In the meantime, I can follow along with this other language.
So we'll take bonus lots, H. All those in favor. Paul?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
It is unanimous. The next one, the next one has no change on it. Preservation of Natural Resources under Section I. There have been no adjustments or changes to any of that.
So do we need to vote on that?
Nope.
Okay.
Section J, Soil Survey. A high-intensity soil survey shall be delineated by a registered soil scientist licensed in the state of Maine on a soil survey map. This, more than anything, this just addresses the whole question we have with the, with the quality of the land and the soils that people are going to be building on.
And this is responsibility of the person developing?
Yes, it is. Now.
I particularly like this because there are a lot of issues. And especially with development and all the wells and all the septics and whatever.
Have you seen the study, Lee J, that came out?
No.
Kennybunk River Study did it, did a study of the Kennybunk River, Duckbrook, Goff's Millbrook, and Troutbrook. And we've got some serious soils issues and and contaminants. So we want to be able to look at it and say, if you're going to build, let's make sure you build on some halfway decent soil.
Sure, makes sense.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Susan, Susan Sinnet to accept J Soil Survey, with a High-Intensity Soil Survey. Any discussion? Susan Sinnet?
Yes.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous. The next paragraph, K. Very poorly drained soils. No dwelling unit shall be constructed on soil classified as being very poorly drained. Septic system soils, no septic system in a cluster development shall be constructed on soil classified as being very poorly or poorly drained soils. That's what's in there currently. And it added in is somewhat poorly drained soils shall also be prohibited for septic system locations unless pre-treatment is installed. It sounds like strange language to me. Huh?
I have a quick question. It's, and again, this is a question development in one of nights here, but no septic system in a cluster development shall be constructed on soil classified poorly drained. Are they allowed to be constructed on non-cluster development, very plain soils? Why is that specific? You know what I'm saying? But I'm just curious for myself.
I don't know the answer to that question, because we don't, we don't do single-family houses, so I don't know what that answer would be.
Okay. I was just curious why it was so specifically, I know it's specifically stated because we're doing this ordinance. It's like, okay, I have horrible soil, but a private house, I'm going to make a septic.
Yeah, but you have to do, you perk and everything. So you don't have any place to put a if you're building a single-family residence and nothing perks out, you're.
I was just curious why that was worded that way. Like, it just basically should be, you can't.
I think it's worded that way because this is part of the cluster.
I understand that. I was just, that's more of, again, reference play.
You should, you could ask Jim Nagle, the Code Enforcement Officer, he might know the answer.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't have a septic that'll match your soil, like, like, I've got a lot of clay on my property. I have a system, which was all designed when I built my house because I don't have good sand to drain down through. So.
Well, I'm, it's, you want to permit. One of the things that you could consider in doing this is that if someone wants to build a single-family home on an existing lot of record, certainly what you mentioned, Richard, would be true, that you can't really deny them if the soil scientist can design a system that will work. But if you're looking at a new, single-family residential subdivision, you could certainly still go in the direction of requiring that they design the development around being able to have good soils to be able to put a septic system on each individual house lot. So, I mean, one of the things you could consider doing is not just requiring it for clustering. You could require it in regular residential new subdivisions. Because as you know, most of, they, they put test pit locations on each lot in 100-foot radius to separate from well locations to make sure that they're meeting the state law. They could also, at the same time, do the soils analysis, the high intensity as you're requiring in the cluster. And if there's a lot or two or three in the subdivision that have very poorly drained soils, they may need to go back and redesign that that layout in order to accommodate better soils on a new lot to be able to address the septic system design in that respect. If you wanted to do that. I know you're very focused right now on the, on the cluster.
Well, I think, I think that's something that we can look at when we, once we get through this cluster, we can start looking at the residential subdivision itself and say, okay, what are we going to do here? Because soils is a big problem.
That's why I asked. I didn't mean to open a can of worms, because the soil.
It's not, it's not a can of worms.
But it was such a poor, you know, results are happening around the water and for the runoff and for the soils in the town. So I just want to make sure that we're that was specific. And I know that was because of this specific ordinance, but I was just curious. Thank you.
So do we want to accept it as written?
Well, I'm, I'm troubled by the wording. Somewhat poorly drained soil shall also be prohibited for septic system locations unless pre-treatment is installed.
You should quotation that, mark that too, because you're basically saying that is a category. You know how you have very poorly drained in quotations? You should have somewhat poorly in quote category.
Well, I would probably qualify that sentence in the beginning to use a point that Lee J just made, and that is those types of septic systems are being developed every day. And I think they're prohibited unless a suitable, you know, solution is not available. In other words, no design that can be crafted to make the opt or the land usable, then it's prohibitive. But I think we can blanket prohibit something without giving the developer an opportunity to present us with a system that we may not have even thought of yet that development or that suitable and workable. Am I making sense? Sort of like Paul just said, he had to put a septic in with chambers in order to build, I mean, a developer and a, an engineer could come up with some system that would enable them to build on a lot that otherwise would have been considered unsuitable. So I think we should qualify in the beginning of that sentence by saying unless a suitable solution can be found, comma.
How about unless, can, can I suggest, it says unless a certified design system is installed? Because I, I.
I like that.
Is there a pre-treatment? I mean, that, what if I say I'm going to put it in a holding tank first and then pump it out? Is that pre-treating it or? And I don't want to be picky. I'm just saying that this is something that you need a professional who knows what they're doing to go design something, certify to the town that, hey, no kidding, if I do this, it's going to work. I'm not going to go contaminate somebody's well water.
Paul's right. I think pre-treatment is very vague, and I think it should come out. Qualify it with, Paul, what was that line?
Certified system can be designed?
Certified design.
Yes.
You know, is approved.
Okay, yeah, that, that sounds good.
Yep, does that make sense? I mean, I.
So a certified at the board is somewhat, somewhat poorly drained soils should be prohibited. Unless something is at that, should be, shall be prohibited.
Unless a certified engineer, whatever their specific title is, can provide the town with a suitable design.
Yeah. I mean, when you get to that, professional to come in and figure it out that, hey.
And I think professional is.
Make it safe.
Professional is the operative word here. Not your Uncle Joe from down the street.
Yeah, I mean, I can dig a hole and put chambers in, or I can put a lot of sand, but that doesn't mean it's going to work.
You had a comment, Lee J?
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, looking at, I, I agree with some of the wording here, and we can wordsmith it a little bit, but a soil scientist who has to design these systems has to stamp and sign their name on it anyway, just like a professional engineer would. And they have to do the, what we call HHT 200 forms in order to even design a septic system that goes to the state for their records. So I think if, if you say something else, a certified soil scientist can design a system. I might have to, I wordsmith that for you, but throw that in there.
Okay.
Then that way, you're, I will never say you're guaranteed, but you're guaranteed that an engineered system will be designed that hopefully can address that issue.
I like Paul's adjective, that it has to be additionally or designed. No, so that's an ad for for fine septic, you know, seen and certified in doing this.
Yeah, and that would be a soil scientist. They're professional. They have to put their stamp and their name and their seal on it, just as the professional would.
Right.
So, Lee J, do you want to craft a sentence and we we can, you don't have to do it the second, but.
Yep, yep. That's, yep, under septic, I will kind of play with that a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, because under, it's under K, A1.
Then we'll, we'll move on to L. Shoreline access. Where we cluster planned unit development, a butt's a water course or water body, a portion of the shoreline as well as reasonable access to it shall be part of the common open space. So if you're on the water, you're going to have open space on the water. We're not going to allow you to have five houses on the water and nobody can get, gain access to look at the water.
Yep.
Okay, so move, accept the change?
Second.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Paul to accept section L as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Susan? Sinnet?
Oh, no.
Aye.
Yes, there was, there's been no discussion, so we're going to move on to motion. Is that an accept or a reject?
Yes, I accept.
Okay, so Susan Roth is accepting. Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Paul Green?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
He's going to have to take an aspirin when this is all over.
Our names in succession, so it's fine. It's, it's, it's making me laugh, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, the next section for M for the water supply. The only addition that was put in there is item number three, will not draw down the water table to the recharge detriment of the underlying aquifer of adjacent water courses or water bodies. Now, this came about when we were talking at Pinecrest. And it was going to drain the aquifer to put in four, four units, would have drained the aquifer.
And existing houses were only getting what? Two gallons a minute?
Yeah, they weren't getting a lot.
And they were like, eight wells were six or 800 feet deep. It was cuckoo. Consequently, nothing's happening there, which I think is good. Okay, M, are we on, so move then?
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Except M as written? N as written?
M, yep. Do you, do you need a motion on M? Are you good?
We have a motion. We need a second.
Second it.
Okay. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green for the adoption of M Water Supply as written. Any discussion?
Who's in charge of that?
It's all part of the processing. When, when they submit their plans, they have to justify all of this.
Okay.
Paul?
Aye.
Susan Roth?
Aye.
Susan Sinnet?
Aye.
It is unanimous. The next one down, N, is a duplicate of what we just approved.
Why?
So we'll just have to, to.
We'll stop the letter?
I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear. Yeah, we just have to re, renumber, reletter them.
Yeah.
So common, common septic system. Right in the middle of the paragraph, the planning board may allow individual wastewater disposal systems where soil types are conducive to high-density development substantiated by the submission of a hydrogeological assessment and feasibility analysis. So basically, we're saying if you can, if you can prove it to us, we can let you do it. Doesn't say we will, however. It says may.
So are we back to a professional assessment again? I think we are.
Yes.
It goes, goes along with K.
Yeah.
Right. So, Lee J, will you, whatever language you are going to insert earlier, then do the same thing here. So we have some, we have consistent language. Right?
Can do.
Sorry.
I think Ted was having a really bad day. And he did this because P, N, O, and P are all identical.
Yeah.
And Q. And Q.
And Q.
What's Q identical to? Oh, yeah. Okay. So P and Q are out. And that leaves us with landscaping, landscape screening buffers. In the R one and DB one and other urbanized sections of the town, of town, the board will require a well-designed landscape screen and entrance consisting of trees, shrubs, fencing and exposed ledge that enhance the visual appearance of the project. The exterior perimeter of the development shall be designed with a continuous landscaped area buffer, a continuous landscape buffer. Not less than fifty feet in width owned in common by the homeowners association or conveyed to an existing land trust organization and maintained to form an effective visual barrier to observation from external properties, dwellings and streets. In the R three and R four districts, the perimeter buffer shall be provided along the front road, accepting openings. The planning board may grant, may permit the width of the buffer strip to be reduced to thirty feet in situations where the applicant can conclusively demonstrate that topography, existing vegetation, fences, landscaping or any combination thereof can achieve a seventy-five to ninety percent visual blockage from exterior properties at the time of installation. Streets or driveways shall be exempt from the landscape buffer. Uh, from the landscape buffer requirement at the intersection in order to provide visibility for vehicles entering and leaving the development. Walking paths may be permitted to weave through the landscape buffer area to provide recreational amenities for the residents.
Well, I have one comment and, you know, first of all, this is a big section, lots of parts. And I don't know if we wanna break it up or not, but, um, that whatever is planted to replace what has been removed should be consistent with its surroundings. In other words, they've, the existing flora and, uh, you know.
Right, so you're not putting in those bush trees that you can get, you know.
Right, or palm trees.
Right.
Or, you know.
Yeah, I, I do agree with you with this. I think it should be broken up into at least two sections. In the R one, DB one and other urbanized sections should be one part of it. The next one would start with the sentence in the R three and.
R three and R four.
Yep, break that up into two sections. It would, if, if nothing else, it would read easier.
Keep it as old, but just move it as a new paragraph?
Yes.
Or do you, yeah.
Or, or point one and point two, similar to what was done with the water supply.
And that the plantings need to be in sync or in harmony with, uh, the exist what was existing and is existing.
How about of a native, native, um, choice? So that, because it's one thing that some plants are, are, um, oh gosh, what's? So we're invasive to the area and do well, but then there's also that we know grow well here, native vegetation that is, is not in any way. For example, um, and I have, I have a good example of it right here. I have the burning bushes, which, you know, turn vibrant red. Those are invasive plants. They're no longer allowed to be sold in the state. Yeah.
In New Hampshire too.
Yeah, and they, and they're no longer allowed to be sold. So do you want someone to somehow get that type of vegetation here? Plant, want them to plant vegetation of a native, you know, a native, um, that's what I'm looking for. Uh, I mean, I, I would say native choice, but a native, something that we know will grow here and thrive here and is not an invasive plant.
Yeah, if I end up taking out pine trees and poison ivy, do you want me to put that back as a, uh, boundary?
Depends on who your neighbor is, right?
Maybe the pine trees, but not the poison ivy.
You know, I placed it, probably wanna put some kinda nice fern bush or something that, you know, hides it and gives you a nice boundary. Well, I think you should replace the poison ivy with poison oak.
Yeah.
So, so native is fine.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. Native to the region. Let's say something to that effect.
Right. Cause you know, somebody will go back and put poison ivy back there just.
I hope they will.
Right next to their palm trees.
Should it be written and or or inclusive versus just and? So it basically is saying that everything in that list has to be planted. A well-designed landscape screen and entrance of, but not limited to trees, shrubs, fencing and or exposed versus it just being and, cuz it's basically saying you have to do all those things to put them in the way it's written.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah, do I have to go get ledge and put it in?
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah.
I think those are examples, right?
Right. DJ, you'll split.
Well, well-designed landscapes, landscape screen and entrance.
I mean, this has come up. This is what, you know, one of the reasons why I was here constantly is that this currently is not alive and not actually screening. It was left as a buffer in the cluster development, but it is not a buffer. It is just dead wood. So there needs to be some way to form that, that is something that if you are, if you are in a, making a cluster development, you don't just leave dead things stuck there. It has to be something that is, you know, there's some, if, if what you took out was dead, I'm sorry, but you need to make it so there's a screen.
And I think that's where, when we get further down, when we say it's seventy-five to ninety percent visual blockage from exterior properties at the time of installation, that should, should resolve that problem. Cause the only way you're gonna get one hundred percent is if you build a twelve-foot-high fence to surround everything.
Thinking about.
Twelve foot may not be high enough. I think we should be allowed.
It would be for me, Rich, because I'm only five foot four, so I, I wouldn't be able to see.
Yeah, but if you're standing on the hill at your property, you'd be able to look over. So I think we should say, you know, twelve to fifteen to twenty-foot-high castle walls.
Anywho, I didn't mean to go off. I was just saying it the way that it was written. It just seemed like it was too inclusive and that.
My question on that particular one. In the R one, DB one and other urbanized sections of town, the board will require, shouldn't it say shall require? Cause I've always run across the great debate between will and shall.
But this one, you want them to actually have to do it.
Which is why you would say shall.
Shall and lays are what dominate in zoning ordinances. Will is not used a lot.
Yeah, shall has almost become the legal requirement.
Shall it is.
Okay, so Paul, you're gonna split this section up and you're gonna add something about native viable native plants and shrubs and trees and ledge if you wanna plant it, see, watch it grow. You're gonna add and or. Susan, would say the second to the last?
No, it was actually the first one, the first full one that would say consisting of trees, shrubs, fencing and ledge. To, and so basically it's saying you have to do all these things in order for it to, to be there. Versus, we'd like you to make it be an appropriate buffer. So how you would word that, what would be. Yeah, and, you know, and or, or inclusive to, or, you know, something like that. Combination thereof, something like that.
Yeah.
And then the rest of it follows through because you, once you do it, it'll go with the rest of what you.
Yeah, that's good. We've actually done a lot. Shocking, but we really did, um.
Are we gonna tackle the R three, R four talk, part of it or no?
Yeah, why not?
I think we've done, we've done a lot.
Well, if, we might as well take on the R three, R four. That'll finish up that entire section too.
Okay, go for it.
So.
The perimeter buffer shall be provided along front road, accepting openings. And, and it talks about it a little bit further on that because you're gonna have those openings, the streets or driveways are exempted from the landscape buffer requirement at the intersection, which only makes sense. But yeah, we're gonna have a fifty-five, fifty-foot-wide buffer all the way around. I have no idea how you're getting out though.
Yeah.
And how do you feel about this seventy-five to ninety percent visual blocking?
I don't know, just the way it's written, it seems to be.
Broken off.
The planning board may permit.
Yeah, I, I tend to, to, you know, if the applicant can say to us, I can give you seventy-five to ninety percent visual blocking and do so and only need thirty feet of a buffer. I don't, I, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm okay with that. I like the idea that they can do it.
Yeah, but it's again, we, they have to come before us and we get to look at the details and decide yes or no. It said the planning board may.
Yeah.
So I think that's fine.
Okay.
Cause ultimately, just the decision rests with us anyway.
Does, does this, but being somewhat ignorant with your ordinance, do you require any type of, um, renderings to be provided as part of this review process? It's one thing for them to show something on a site plan and say, you know, we're gonna achieve that. It's another thing for them to come in with a rendering and say, this is what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, often we do get.
We could. We have not in the past, but we have discussed, uh, that idea. Uh, but we have not yet taken up requiring it. But that, that might be a good, this might be a good spot to put that in.
That's why I'm asking that. Right at the, right at the end, you could put something in that, we could put something in that indicates that um, in order to, um, provide, um, I'm just trying to think of how to word it, but we could word it so that will require, that the planning board requires renderings of lands, of portions of the landscaping to indicate how how these standards will be achieved.
Yep.
Because as we know, they're not being achieved where, across the street because of.
Unfortunately, no.
No. So I'd like, I'd like, I would like that because again, the buffering part is the part that was utilized and said, well, I met the requirements. And he, and he did, but they're not, they weren't strong enough. So that's to have a, a rendering of saying, okay, this is what we're doing. This is what we're putting in. This is what it is, this is what it'll look like. And if it doesn't go back to it, that means he's going against what he did.
Right. Right.
And you have it in print and you have it in picture form.
Yep.
Can I suggest the following then?
Absolutely.
And it's not that onerous to do that. I mean, these guys do it on CAD or, uh, using Illustrator all the time.
Go ahead, Paul. So I think the, the, the paragraph that says the planning board may permit the width of the buffer to be reduced to thirty feet where the applicant submits a rendering that can conclusively demonstrate that the topography, existing vegetation, fences, landscaping and any culmination thereof can achieve seventy-five to ninety percent visual blockage from the exterior properties at the time of installation.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think if you add that submits a rendering after the applicant and that becomes a sentence at the end of both the R one, DB one, as well as the R three and R four.
Yes.
And then the R three, R four, right, where it says, uh, provided along the uh, road, accepting openings, and then it picks up where streets or driveways shall be exempt. I think that all goes together.
It does.
So that, that paragraph that, you know, that gives you the exception goes at the end of both of those sections, if you're gonna split them. Right?
Yes.
Because if you're gonna allow the, the R three and R four to go to thirty, if they have it designed right and it works, then I would think we would also do that in the R one and DB one and not keep that one at fifty feet.
I agree.
I agree. See, I'm not, I'm not sure on that one. Okay. Why? So be, because, well, more from the R one. The R one is a much denser residential neighborhood and you would want to have, uh, more buffering than less. So I'm not sure allowing them to cut down to thirty feet would be, would be a good thing, even though it's, it's buffered. I'm not sure how, how much of an impact it would have in terms of noise. You may not see it, but you might have, have a fair amount of noise coming from the property next door.
So you had just stated previously that if, um, thirty percent allowed you to have the, the appropriate seventy to seventy-five to ninety percent buffer, then it would be fine. Well, I don't, I don't see what the difference between the two combinations of it's still allowing you to have seventy-five to ninety percent buffer, even though it is closer. I don't see how it's truly that different from what.
It's, it's larger lots, it's a larger lot size than you get in the R one.
But I think that because of that, it makes sense that the R one, it could be suitable to make it uh, thirty feet as opposed to fifty, cuz the houses are much closer together and the whole scale is much smaller. So, you know, thirty may seem more awkward in the R three and the R four than it does in the R one. So I'm sort of, I agree with Paul. I think it depends on the situation and as long as it's providing and with Susan, a seventy-five to ninety percent, uh, blockage. Uh, I think it's just as appropriate in the R one, even perhaps even more so.
Okay, thoughts on that, Lee J?
Um, well, mine was thought it was, I wasn't thinking of the, from the design standpoint, more of the structural standpoint. And, um, if that's how you all feel, then what I think would the, the, the submission of the renderings in order for them to seek like a waiver or a reduction in that, in the width, then we would require the renderings at the end of both of those statements. So that it says, in any, in any situation above, if the applicant risk wishes to desire a reduction in the buffer width to no less than thirty feet, they shall submit renderings to show the design and go on and on to basically set it up so that they could seek a waiver to no less than thirty feet in any situation. But in doing so, they need to provide the renderings to show us what they're gonna do to achieve that.
Right, and that's what Paul was saying, yeah. I agree with that.
Sidewalk and go, geez, I really don't see that as an appropriate reduction just from the, even with the renderings and walking through, if you think it's close together, Rich. I mean, that's one of the things we'd be doing.
That's true, cuz it says we, we may permit you. It doesn't say we will, we shall permit you. Okay.
Correct.
I can go along with that.
Okay, I will, um, wordsmith that and see what we can do. It's gonna be a little bit of a rewrite for that whole section, but that's okay.
Okay, so I'm going. Okay, so I'm going to suggest at this point that we stop here. That will leave us sections three and four that we can pick up either the next time or in July, depending on what, what the agenda looks like for June fifteenth.
My last day of school, how exciting.
June fifteenth, the last day of school?
Yeah.
I will be zooming from Nashville, Tennessee that day.
Why did you have to take away my thunder right there? Why?
I don't want to go to Nashville.
Last day of school, and you're like, I'm going to be in Nashville.
I'm going to a conference.
Oh.
This is not fun and games. This is a conference.
I'm sorry. I've been to conferences in Nashville, don't.
This is a, it's, it's two days, eight to ten hours a day.
Uh huh, again, I've been to conferences in Nashville.
I don't, I, I don't go to those kinds of places.
Well, we're not going to go there to define what those kinds of places are.
Leave us to remember. We are being taped.
We're going to leave it to everyone's imagination, what that, what that means.
I don't know what you're talking about, Rich.
Okay, other business. We do, next Wednesday night on the ninth, we have town meeting. So please, everybody show up. I hope everybody shows up. We've got a lot, i- if you look at the agenda, we have a lot of items on the warrant for, I think there's eight or nine that are on the warrant for adjustments that we've made over the past year.
Actually, it's ten items.
Is it ten?
Yeah.
Okay, it's ten. It's even worse than I thought.
So Lee J, do you have anything to add in terms of business?
I, I apologize.
Comments, criticisms, whatever of the planning board you've inherited.
I, I am not ready to comment on that. I'm still observing.
Okay.
As you'll know, or as you'll find out, every board in every town works differently, and, and I try to adjust as best I can, but I don't like to change what you do all that much if I can help it.
Okay, well, we're all interested in learning, too, so feel free to inject your thoughts into the conversation.
Well, thank you. I will do that in time.
Well, good.
Rich and I are still trying to get acclimated, and, and we're getting on the same page with projects and whatnot, so I think we're, we're doing all right.
Good. I think we are too, actually.
The, the first meeting in July. If I can get my calendar to come up.
What date is that?
Which is July sixth. We have elections for planning board officers.
That's hard to believe. It's almost July.
I know it.
I mean, I know it's June first, but it feels like the summer and it's like, yeah.
And Rich, do you do that at the beginning of the meeting, after you go through all the administrative stuff?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Are there any, just for, for my reference, are there any sidewalks or anything that you guys have planned prior to our?
We have nothing planned right now.
Okay.
And until, until we get applicant, applications in front of us, we will have an application. We have a couple of them coming up on the June fifteenth meeting, so we may have a sidewalk scheduled for the July sixth meeting. And we should be getting something is, is Southern Maine Planning, any planning board training issues at any point in the near future?
So a, as a workshop in the region, no, we haven't. But I certainly, you know, if we, if things slow down or you get a little more quiet, we can certainly do that just for you folks. I can, I can put together, you know, boardsmanship workshop, which I've done a number of times with, with across the region, Robert's Rules of Order type of workshop. You know, we can, we can splice whatever you'd like to do together, just to, you know, sometimes it's just good. You've got two new board members talking about process, procedure, boardsmanship. I think there are definitely some general issues that, that we all can have refreshers in. I work with some boards, and I'm constantly having to remind them of certain procedural issues. And so we can certainly put some time aside for, for that type of workshop when you're ready.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been a couple of years since we had anything like that, so it would be good to have.
Yeah, I have, I, I did a presentation with one of my sister organizations during the pandemic on subdivision review, and it was all, you know, it was all zooming. I've shied away from doing that a lot. I'd rather wait till we can, which we're starting to now, be able to put together an in-person workshop. It just seems to work better with those types of issues when you get, you know, thirty, forty, fifty people in a room. And I usually tag team with, with our attorney from Jensen Bear, Gardner and Henry. And, and we do certain scenarios of certain issues and have Q and A. Probably by fall, we'll be back to being able to do that type of thing. But I can do something specific with you folks.
We, we may never want to get back to doing that. We all like, we all like the Zoom meetings, because it's, it's a a thirty-five foot commute to where I'm going when I leave here.
I, I hear you. You know, I, I do a lot of driving, or I did a lot of driving around the region to all, all you board folks. And since the pandemic said it's very easy to just shut down the computer and go and, go to, go to the next room, you know?
We heard that a lot.
I have been tracking, I have been tracking the, the issue, the legislation on continuing to allow zooming. The committee that's hearing that and got, was going to be workshopping it, and I've been touching base with, with our attorney, Natalie Burns. And she's keeping me up to date on the status of, of that. So there is legend that may allow us to continue to zoom.
That would be nice.
See how the legislature falls down on, on that, and whether they are able to.
Good.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay, is there anything else?
Yeah.
I move, we adjourn.
We are done. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. You guys have a good weekend.
Thank you all.
And I, I will get the, did you, you sent the findings of fact to me out already, Lee J?
I did.
Okay. Say what?
How will it be coming to me, so I can make sure it doesn't go in my spam?
It'll be coming from a Rundle PB at richganong.com.
Okay, but I'm saying, you were saying it's, what, what program are you using for me to sign it and return it to you?
A DocuSign.
DocuSign, okay.
DocuSign.
Comes through DocuSign.
Okay.
You know, actually, I'm not sure it does come from a Rundle PB. I think it comes from Taxman.
Probably.
It's coming out of my business account.
Okay, so I'll make sure I keep an eye out for it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.